Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Would you guys mind taking your seats? We're gonna get started this evening. What I'd like to start with real quick, if you don't mind, is could we please, if you're able, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? If you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would beg my indulgence, I've asked the chief to just give us a quick safety talk because I know sometimes we have different attendees from night to night. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. Just a quick refresher on the fire exits, if you weren't here Monday. Exit here to my left, down the stage here, to the right, stage right, out the back and to the right is your quickest way out. And again, any medical emergencies, just give us a holler, we have help right in the back. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So, just to remind everybody, when we concluded on Monday evening, we had just finished Article 15, as we had announced, it was clustered with Article 13, which means we're still in the middle of active business. So, in a moment, we will be immediately going to Article 13. But before we do, I just wanted to kind of update the body as to a development that occurred today. It's my understanding that we may have a motion being made this evening to reconsider a prior article. I just want to explain what the protocol is, so that everybody's familiar with it. I have spoken to the potential moving party, and I asked if they would understand that we're in the middle of active business and delay making their motion until we complete Article 13, since we're in the middle of a clustered article. They've agreed. I will, after 13, as a matter of courtesy, look to the microphones, and if there is a party waiting to make such a motion, I will go to them for their motion. I've asked if they would to please explain, to the extent they can, the substantive reason for their motion, so the body is, as a courtesy to the body, people can be prepared for that. As you may know, we have a town bylaw. The town bylaw says that we cannot take up reconsideration for anything less than 36 hours, but we did accept or voted in favor of Article 2, which governs when we meet, which is Mondays and Wednesdays. Therefore, if there is a motion to reconsider, it will be taken up as a first order of business on Monday evening. Second, if the article that I've been informed is moved to be reconsidered, it was a financial article, it had free cash as a component of it. It was also clustered with a second article that also had free cash associated with it. If that motion to reconsider is made, we would not be able to take up Article 36, which is the budget tonight. That would become the second order of business on Monday evening. So, we're gonna go to Capitol. If there is a motion from the floor, I will recognize that after Capitol is completed, I'll then move on to, I think it's Article 18. And if the motion has been made to reconsider, which would preclude us from doing the budget, at that point, we would adjourn for the evening, and we'll come back on Monday. Just want to make sure we were kind of clear, as you understood what the protocol was going to be. Okay? Great. Thank you. So, moving on to Capitol, I'll first start, as we do as a tradition, to the chairman of the Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee... I'm sorry. Wait a second. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13. Motion 1 is printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Town of Canton has a capital planning committee, and first, we do want to thank the Capital Planning Committee and its Chair Dave Emheart for making the recommendations to the Finance Committee, which we review and consider when making our recommendations on the capital requests. So, the Finance Committee does thank the CPC for their hard work and dedication to our capital outlay. This particular motion, Motion 1, allows the Finance Director, also our Chief Procurement Officer, to supervise the purchase and sale of vehicles and equipment, and allows the appointed renovation, building renovations committee to supervise building projects.
Thank you. Moving on, I'll move on directly to the chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Emheart, Al, Eight Talbot Road, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. Capital Planning Committee meets through a series of public meetings. We take the approved budgets from the Finance Department and the Finance Committee and review all the capital requests for the town for fiscal year '26, starting July 1st. I'd like to thank the members of the Capital Planning Committee, Sean Chu, Lisa Lopez, Chris Deck, Adam Nichols, Jason Green, and Greg Murphy. Mr. Moderator, I move Article 13, Motion 2, as printed in the warrant.
We need to dispense with Motion 1 first. So, I'll call for the vote. The Finance Committee has moved Article 13, Motion 1. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on Article 13, Motion 1? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote approved unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your eyes.
Sorry, I'm so slow. Just a question. I see that of the trucks that are being replaced, these Ford Mavericks, one is a hybrid. And my question is, could the other two, one is in Motion 1 and one is in Motion 2, also be hybrids?
Look, that's on Motion 2 or on Motion 1.
I know, but Motion 1 has one. Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm so sorry. Yep.
But you can stand there.
I think I will. I'll stay right here. Thank you.
So, we're back to Article 13, Motion 1. Is there any further discussion? All right, we did call the vote, and it was voted unanimously. Moving on to Motion 2. Mr. Chairman, you made the motion. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Back to Mr. Chairman for any further discussion.
Discussion on Article 13, Motion 2. This is the municipal cash capital request for a total of $1,4,355 for all the municipal items, as printed in your warrant on page 38. This includes all the municipal departments.
Thank you. One quick point, mine says $1,4,355, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
You are correct, Mr. Moderator.
I'm trying very hard to keep track. Excellent. Further discussion, down to the Select Board? Yes?
So, reference my previous remarks. We have three...
I'm sorry, Dr. Harrington, if you could, could you please just identify yourself as a protocol for the record?
My apologies. Susan Harrington, 45, Spreesling.
Thank you.
There's three of these Ford Mavericks, and I'm just, one of them is a hybrid, the other two are not, and my question was, is there a reason they couldn't all be hybrids? It looks like the cost is the same.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The vehicles being requested for the municipal department are used for different departments for different uses, and as we review those uses, we look at always, always asking the department head if they can use a hybrid or a green vehicle. In some cases, they recommend not to do that for certain reasons.
Thank you.
Reasons are?
The building inspector has to go to certain sites that are off-road, their terrain. He requested a non-hybrid, and we recommended that to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on Article 13, Motion 2? Mr. Chairman?
Moderator, in addition to moving Motion 2, the Finance Committee does support this motion for these cash capital funds from the general fund to purchase the listed items requested for these various municipal departments totaling $1,4,335, as we've been discussing.
Excellent. Thank you. Seeing no one else rising to the microphones, we'll call a vote on Motion 13, excuse me, Article 13, Motion 2. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote approved unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 3, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate funds for the listed school cash capital items of the various categories listed totaling $1,100,000.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee supported all of these items unanimously for the $1,100,000 school cash capital.
Great. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 13, Motion 3? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote approved unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 4, as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
This motion is to appropriate $2,618,000 for the library interior renovations, with the relevant costs of this phase to be paid from the following funding sources: a transfer of $2,168,000 from free cash, which the Finance Committee supports, and $450,000 of unused funds from the library roof and HVAC replacement project in the form of a turnback, which the Finance Committee also supports. This project will help the Canton Public Library improve its reliable service to patrons and ensure that the library has an interior layout that will meet the future needs of our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Planning unanimously supported this item for the partial funding of the library renovation for $2,618,000.
Thank you. Further discussion at the microphone?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Capone. I'm the library director here, and also five Curtis Circle. Louis has a slideshow that the library trustees have prepared. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So, over the past year, you undoubtedly, undoubtedly have seen the construction outside of the library. This is part of what the library trustees are calling our next chapter, and the repairs to the library that have been almost completed, they are just finishing some last touches right now. That project was the outer envelope of the building. We worked to repair the exterior of the building. Louis, would you put next slide? So, as you may know, our historic library was originally in Town Hall, and then it was constructed in 1902, expanded again in 1962. And then, I remember when the library was designed in the late 90s and built and expanded to its current footprint in 2003. Next slide, please. So, you can see how our library has changed throughout the years. It has gone from three main historic parts of the building that are built around a central rotunda to a 36,000-square-foot multi-level, multi-function facility. Next slide. And after 20 years, it's been 20 years since our new library, and over the past 20 years, we have had approximately 200,000 visits each year, and our user needs have changed. Next slide. And as you have seen, when you were driving by, we had leaks throughout the building. These leaks came in through cracks in the ceiling, some of the seams, and the building was damaged. Next slide. So, this is what the scaffolding looked like. It's all down now, and it's complete and under budget. And so, you'll see in the warrant that we have about $450,000 to turn back to town meeting, if you should so vote tonight, to do so. And those funds would be used to fund the repair of the inside of the building. Next slide. And so, the HVAC is just a little piece that we have left. We had to wait until it got warm enough to turn on. So, that's the last piece, and we should have that finished and turned on this week. Our library is so beloved, and I speak from personal experience. I know many of you here come to the library frequently, and perhaps 20 years ago, you all bought a brick when the library sold some for fundraisers. 331 businesses and residents purchased bricks over the past year to support this project. Next slide. Those bricks will go in a beautiful, open park space at the front of the library. So, we plan on breaking ground this summer, and then all fall, we will have more of your customized bricks going in, and it's a real testament to the love the community has for our library, that over 300 people and businesses have come together to purchase these bricks to make quite an impact. We've also sought funding from various other sources. So, we did earlier receive approval for $200,000 from CPA funds that will be used to repair the historic portions of the library that got wet from the roof. Go ahead, Louis. Thank you. So, this is some of that damage. You can see here, we have plastic sheeting that's holding up some of the horsehair plaster and the detail, the dental molding throughout, and then you can see some of the water damage from the rotunda here. And we hope to use the $200,000 from CPA to restore our historic areas of the building. Thank you, Louis. In that same area where we have the plastic sheeting, some of the improvements to that space we plan on making will be to create a quiet study space, primarily focused on adult users. And if you're looking to orient yourself of where this is in the library, this is where we used to lend out pictures and paintings, so in that room, and we're just looking to put some beautiful glass doors up and make that a quiet space, because over the past decade, we have seen more and more of a demand for small and quiet group space, meeting space at the library. Next slide. Okay. So, one of the major highlights of this renovation is we're going to take advantage of the 22-foot-high ceilings in the reference room, and we are going to acoustically isolate that space from the rest of the collection and the rest of the library, so that our tweens and teens have a place to go to engage in library programs and resources without interfering with the enjoyment and use of the building by others. So, what does that mean? Really, we want to let the teens be teens and be a little bit noisy in an appropriate way at the library without disrupting all of the other adults that are there. And by creating a space for our tweens and teens, where we have not a dedicated space for them now, this is going to improve the operation flow of the rest of the library. Next slide. So, you can see another major improvement will be to our front lobby. We're looking at making some major improvements, but we're still gonna maintain the art gallery space where the Canton Art Association displays their work monthly, and we'll still have our new book displays, book club offerings in the front lobby, but we'll have more of a visual line of sight, and we'll have acoustical treatments so that people can have quiet areas in the library to study. Next slide. During the course of the renovation, we do expect to remain operational. So, unlike when we have moved the library in the past, when the flood happened, if you all remember, we moved over to Draper. That's not the plan. The plan this time is to keep the library open and just work on sections at a time. And so, this is sort of an explanation of how we propose keeping the library open while we do the renovation. And you can see the proposed changes to the floor plan of the library here. Next slide. There will also be additional study rooms created throughout the main floor of the library. The lighting that can no longer be replaced will be updated. We can no longer buy ballast for those. We'll be replacing all of the carpeting, the drapes, all of the beautiful finishes in the building. And lastly, we have information on how we propose to fund this. This project has the support of the Finance Committee, the Select Board, the Capital Planning Committee, the Master Planning Committee, and the BRC, and today, we ask for your support as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, is there any further discussion?
No.
Don't see anyone else rising, so would that be in the case? Article, I'll call the vote on Article 13, Motion 4. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 5, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $593,000 to replace Ambulance 1, to be paid for through ambulance receipts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please, for Motion, Article 15, 13, Motion 5, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 6, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $1,090,000 for the replacement of Fire Engine 2, to be paid from the following allowed ambulance funding sources: $590,000 to be borrowed through bonds and notes issued pursuant to this authority; that will be general obligations of the town to be paid from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, Department 170, and that $500,000 be funded from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, again, Department 170. The Finance Committee believes this is an appropriate use of ambulance funds, as a fire engine is considered an ambulatory vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the purchase of Fire Engine 2.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? This does include borrowing, so we need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. It has passed. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 7, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $257,100 for purchasing a construction dump truck to replace the 2000 Truck Number 16. This is a municipal debt capital item that will be paid through borrowing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the purchase of this truck.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? This does involve borrowing, so it's a two-thirds majority vote needed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passed unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 8, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman for discussion.
This motion is supported by the FinCom. It would appropriate $4,500,000 for the purpose of funding the Water System Improvement Construction Contract Number 4. This is a Water Enterprise Fund debt capital item that would be repaid through water receipts with potentially some MWRA funding assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports... The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this construction of Contract Four. Last year, town meeting approved the design for Contract Four, so would like to see this construction get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, this also involves borrowing, two-thirds vote required. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, motion nine, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $2,300,000 for the purpose of the Phase Three, Five-Year Sewer Capital Improvement Plan. This is a Sewer Enterprise Fund debt capital item to be repaid through sewer receipts with, again, potentially some MWRA funding assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this sewer capital improvement plan using sewer debt.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I declare it votes unanimously, approves unanimously, and that also required a two-thirds vote. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, motion 10, as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate a total of $255,400 for the listed four Water Enterprise-related items to be paid from Water Enterprise Surplus, which is also referred to as retained earnings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the, these four items for the Water Enterprise retained earnings.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, motion 11, as printed in the warrant.
The motion has been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate a total of $93,000 for the listed two Sewer Enterprise items to be paid from Sewer Enterprise Surplus, which is also referred to as retained earnings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the purchase of these two items for the Sewer Enterprise.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee, while deferring a recommendation to the voters of annual town meeting, moves Article 13, motion 12, as printed in the warrant.
We have affirmative motion to pass. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
We have motions made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
This article, this motion is to appropriate $330,100 for the purpose of replacing a 2010, 2010 truck, number 35, Street Sweeper, for stormwater management. It would be transferred from sewer, the costs would be, the funds would be transferred from Sewer Enterprise Surplus, which is also known as retained earnings. While the Finance Committee is not necessarily opposed to replacing the Street Sweeper, the Finance Committee decided that this matter should be discussed at the annual town meeting to ensure that voters have a full understanding of the relationship between the Sewer Enterprise Fund and the stormwater activities that can be funded through it, and how the funding for this purpose will evolve. The Sewer Enterprise Fund can be used for this purchase as our stormwater system is one of the two parallel drainage systems that the town has under the town Sewer Enterprise. There are sufficient funds in the Sewer Enterprise Fund to support this purchase while maintaining our targeted reserve within the Enterprise Fund. And there is also a new stormwater fee that has recently been approved by Select Board that will be assessed going forward that will support future stormwater management within the Sewer Enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee voted unanimously not to support this. This was because at the time that the Capital Planning Committee had a lot of questions about this, about the funding, about the stormwater fee. The fee was not, hadn't been voted by the Select Board yet. There was just a lot of unanswered questions. And the, we unanimously did not recommend this to the Finance Committee at the time.
Thank you. Are we going to Mr. Walsh next? Mr. Walsh.
Billy Walsh, 229 Dedham Street, Canton Public Works Operations Manager. I'm here to speak in behalf of the sweeper that is, needs to be replaced. The life expectancy is 10 years. And we're at 15 years right now. The truck also is a 10-year to 15-year replacement. We're at 24 years. All this equipment's going to take us at least 12 to 18 months to get into service. So if we prolong the purchase of this equipment, it'll have a 10% increase in price and also the turnaround to get back into service will be up to a year and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Scollins?
Moderator. Randy Scollins, Finance Director for the town. I want to welcome all you hardy souls coming out here for Chapter Two of the Annual Town Meeting. I also just wanted to say that the remarks I'm going to make here not only apply to this particular motion, but the motion that's going to come after it as well because they're, they both share the same concept of concerning question that CPC had. The good news is that both the Finance and the Capital Committee agree that the 15-year-old street sweeper is beyond the end of its useful life and warrants replacement. The Capital Committee has raised a concern about the funding source for this $330,100 piece of capital equipment. I think it's appropriate for CPC to raise this concern as it creates an education opportunity for the community and for you, the voters. Why the CPC concern, you may ask. CPC was under the impression that the recently enacted Stormwater Utility Fee that will start to be charged this coming July needed to be voted by the Select Board before they could recommend funding for the Street Sweeper. At the time the CPC made their votes on this item in March, that had not happened yet. But by April, after years of consideration of the town's stormwater obligations under federal law, the Select Board had a public hearing and adopted the necessary stormwater fee. Additionally, there was some confusion among CPC and FinCom members that the funding source for this item was tied to enacting the stormwater fee. However, the funding for this item is not tied to the stormwater fee. It never was. The funding source was presented as Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings. And for those who don't know what Sewer Enterprise retained earnings is, it's cash already on hand within the Sewer Enterprise Fund, very much like free cash within the General Fund. Retained earnings in the Sewer Enterprise Fund is currently over $4.25 million, which is 55% of the sewer, the entire Sewer Enterprise budget. The policy target level for the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings is 50% of the enterprise budget as recommended by the Water Sewer Rate Policy Committee to the Select Board, which they have supported with their previous rate actions. At the current Sewer Enterprise run rate of revenue and expenses this fiscal year, I fully expect the fund to end the year at or above the 50% retained earnings target even after funding the stormwater capital items from retained earnings. So maintaining the policy goal even if you voted to support these two items. The next obvious question is, can stormwater expenses be charged to the Sewer Enterprise Fund? The short answer is yes. Master General Law, Chapter 83, is the state law governing what is commonly referred to as a Sewer Enterprise Fund. Or Chapter 83 governs both sewer and stormwater drainage systems within the same law and within the same enterprise fund. You can see that, as Chairman Moore stated, that the town does have two drainage systems. It has a sewer drainage system and it has a stormwater drainage system. And so this same law applies to both of these parallel drainage systems within the same fund, the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Please note that there will be no new Stormwater Enterprise Fund created. With the start of the new stormwater fee, that is not required. Beginning in July, with the advent of collecting stormwater revenues, stormwater revenues and expenses will be accounted for in a separate and unique set of accounts, sub-accounts, within the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Today, over $230,000 of stormwater expense, related expenses, related to payroll, operating expenses, are already being charged to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, including the town's stormwater manager, stormwater consultants, and other stormwater operating expenses. Now that the town is financially committed to funding its federal stormwater mandates, this will continue and expand over the coming years. But now, we will be tracking the stormwater revenues and expenses discreetly from sewer revenues and expenses so that the town can properly manage its stormwater investment capabilities as these requirements expand. In closing, given that it was always the plan to fund these end-of-life stormwater capital items from sewer retained earnings, and the fact that the, the equipment is indeed well past end-of-life, and I believe CPC has constantly complimented the DPW department for the longevity that they get out of their equipment, as you heard from the lives, the current lives of the equipment stated by Mr. Walsh. The fact that the lead time to procure this type of equipment may exceed 12 months, and understanding that deferring these purchases will undoubtedly result in cost increases in the tens of thousands of dollars. So as your fiduciary, I'm advising that I do believe that it is in your financial interest to favorably vote on these, these two motions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Director Scollins. Further discussion? Mr. Karens.
Hi, Alan Karen for Newell Hagan Court, Apartment H, Canton, Massachusetts. I concur with the supporters of the article to replace the stormwater street sweeper. It is long overdue. If it was, if it was like, at the end of the, it was, if it wasn't the fact that it was way overdue to be replaced, I may ask for support delaying it for the stormwater fee. But we don't have the, you know, time to waste on this. So I support adoption of Article 13, motion 12, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Lockren, 258 Norfolk Street, current chair of the Canton Select Board. The Canton Select Board was, presented this information and unanimously supported this recommendation from the Finance Director, and I urge you to support this article as well as the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those, all those in... Yes, sir. Sir, could you identify yourself despite the fact that we all know who you are?
Thank you. Alan Heinz, 460 Annes Street. I'm confused on what the motion is because I thought the motion from the Finance was to, that the subject matter be deferred to the town voter. So I'm confused on what the motion is. So, sorry, I, I may not have been...
I appreciate the catch. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
So we deferred a recommendation, but we were moving the motion that's in the warrant.
So just, just so that I'm clear, the intent of the Finance Committee is an affirmative motion to approve the expenditure as discussed. That's correct?
Right, and as printed in the warrant.
Okay. So you simply, just to clarify to the speaker's point, you were deferring discussion, but you are affirmatively moving the expenditure.
We were deferring our recommendation to support it.
Correct.
But we were not, we, we were still moving the motion as it is printed.
Great, great. Okay. Does that clarify the point? Thank you, I really appreciate it. As you can imagine, I've been getting a lot of pointers from Mr. Heinz. With that being the case, we have an affirmative motion to approve the expenditure. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote passed unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee, again, deferred a recommendation to the voters of annual town meeting for Article 13, motion 13, for the same reasons that I had mentioned regarding motion 12. As with motion 12, oh, I'm sorry, I think you need to...
Yes. So we have a motion that's been made. Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Article 13, motion, Article 13, motion 13 is to appropriate $424,000 for the purpose of replacing a 2001 truck number 19 dump sander sweeper for stormwater management to be transferred from Sewer Enterprise Surplus retained earnings. As with motion 12, the funds for Sewer Enterprise Fund are allowed for this stormwater purchase. They are available for this purchase. And a new reverse, new stream has been established going forward for future stormwater purchases. Just the Finance Committee deferred for the reasons, again, mentioned in motion 12. The recommendation only, but we're moving the motion.
Thank you. So just again, to clarify, to make sure that I'm on the same page, the motion that's being made is an affirmative motion to approve the expenditure that is outlined within the warrant. Again, they're deferring their support based on the discussion you just heard. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Planning Committee unanimously did not recommend this for the exact same reasons as the previous article, Article 12.
Great, thank you. And as the previous speaker, Finance Director Scollins, had indicated during his remarks on the last motion, he indicated that the same points were applicable to this motion. So hopefully, everyone's clear with that. Is there any further discussion? See a gentleman raising? Yes, sir.
It's hi, Greg Murphy, 19 Wildwood. I'm also a Capital Planning member. And all the points that were raised by Mr. Scollins and Mr. Emheart were among the reasons I chose not to recommend it. I do want to say that I intend to vote for it because, and I think we should all vote for it, but I just want to put the caveat out there for people. The Sewer Enterprise Fund has enough money to pay for it and still will have a 50% amount left over, which is the target for any, anything unexpected. Now we're adding a stormwater fee to everyone's bills, so more money's going to the town to pay for some of these things. If I understood it right, maybe Mr. Scollins can correct me if I'm misspeaking, but some of those charges that are currently in the Sewer Enterprise Fund will be shifted over to the portion of the Sewer Enterprise Fund that's allocated to the stormwater fund. To me, what that means...
Sir, if I may, the, the previous speaker is indicating affirmatively that he agrees with the comments just made, for those that couldn't see. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So to, to me, what that means is that we'll, we'll have even more money left over in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And I just want to say that I hope that means that the sewer rates will be held stable, if not lowered, because some of those funds now will be covered by the stormwater fund. But these are all the reasons that I wanted it to be discussed here at town meeting. I wanted everyone to become aware of that. But again, I rise in favor to, to vote for it.
Thank you.
Just with the caveat that we have to keep an eye, where all, you know, what, all this money that we're collecting in different fees now, where it all needs to go.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there any further discussion? So again, just to reaffirm, we have an affirmative motion to support the expenditure. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote passed unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, motion 14, as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion that's been made. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $117,064 for the cost of purchasing a fire suppression system for the Police Department Evidence Room to be paid from the following funding sources. $19,479 to be transferred from surplus funds from the Police Record Data Management System Second Round Project, which is General Fund Department 100, account, I believe it is, number 121045872382300, into account number 1210458210B2600. And that $97,585 be transferred from General Fund 100, account number 121045872382207, into account number 1210458210B2600, also associated with the Police Record Data Management System Project. This project will allow the evidence room to have a better fire suppression system in, in support of an evidence room audit that had been completed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to answer your questions, it was necessary to read those account numbers. Chairman Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supported this, this purchase for the evidence room, $117,064. And just the Finance Director, I know, was correct, but just kind of further information, $97,585. information, $97,585 was approved by town meeting for FY22 for the data record management system, which is being reallocated, and $19,479 was approved by town meeting for FY23 for the data record management system, so...
Great, thank you for that...
Same thing as the account numbers, but maybe a little easier to understand.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 15, as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $401,320 for the cost of replacing the HVAC system at the Elder and Human Services Senior Center. This is a municipal debt capital item that will be paid for through borrowing and improve the climate control at this important community building and climate shelter.
And just because I have a difficulty hearing sometimes, that amount was $401,320.
$401,320.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the purchase of the HVAC system for the Senior Center. We hope that we will not see any more capital requests for the heating and cooling system at this facility. We've had a number of them over the past years. Town meeting has supported it, but we hope that this, this will finally put it to bed and, and get all the problems corrected over there.
Thank you, appreciate that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Yes, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? God bless you. It requires a two-thirds majority, I declare the vote passed unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 12, 16, sorry, as printed in the warrant.
Yeah, don't go back on me.
No, I don't.
All right. We have a motion that's been made, is it seconded? I hear a second. Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $100,000 for the cost of replacing the 2005 Fire Station Boiler at Fire Station 1, which is the central fire, the command headquarters on Revere Street. This is a municipal debt capital item that will be paid through, for, through borrowing, and will help ensure the reliability of this important emergency building, emergency management building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this Fire Station Boiler replacement for $100,000.
Excellent, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 17, as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $170,000 for the cost of replacing the Elder and Human Services 2016-20 Passenger Bus with a 2024 Starcraft Bus. This is a municipal debt capital item that will be paid for through borrowing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the replacement of this bus for the Elder and Human Services. They have a number of vehicles over there, but they require at least two of the larger capacity buses, because of the demand for their services is steadily increasing.
Thank you. And as it was the case with the last two articles, this one, motions rather, this one also requires, with debt, requires a two-thirds majority. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Motion, Article 13, Motion 18, as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $2 million for the cost of replacing unit ventilators for the John F. Kennedy Elementary School. This is a school debt capital item that will be paid for through borrowing and will help improve air quality within the school building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this $2 million for the JFK unit ventilators.
Fantastic, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article 15, Motion 18, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? That required two-thirds, I declare it passed unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 19, as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee supports this motion to appropriate $45,000 for the cost of purchasing door replacements and door closers for Canton High School. That is, the funds are to be transferred from surplus funds for, from the Canton High School Rooftop Unit Number 10 Project for this important safety upgrade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports the purchase, $45,000 of school cash capital. It's a reallocation of previous cash capital that wasn't used for a higher priority need that the school has, so we support this.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 13, Motion 20, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. We have a motion's made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
This finance, the Finance Committee supports this cash capital motion to appropriate $41,000 for the cost of a fire alarm panel for the Canton High School. The funds will be transferred from surplus funds for the high school's school auditorium painting project for this important safety upgrade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Emhart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee unanimously supports this purchase of $41,000, reallocating previous cash capital, school cash capital for this higher priority need.
Great, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote passes, the motion passes unanimously. And if I may, if you beg my indulgence, thank you very much to the CPC for yeoman's work, and Mr. Emhart, thank you for your leadership. Okay. As I had indicated before we started this evening, I'm going to pause for a moment just to see if anyone rises to a microphone to make a motion. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Gary Kaplan, I live at 22 Sumner Street, and I move to reconsider Article 19 for two major reasons.
Okay, if I may, so we have a motion's been made, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Sir, could you, are you about to? Could you, as a courtesy, inform the body as your reasons?
I will. Two major reasons. First, no notice was given of this proposal to the abutters, and therefore, there was no opportunity to raise issues of appropriate use, or noise, hours, traffic and parking, heavy construction, disruption, and other adverse impacts on the neighborhood. Secondly, there was insufficient discussion of the financial issues, either in the warrant or at town meeting, including the actual costs and inflation, the uncertainty of state funding, and the impact of this expenditure on funding for town road paving and repairs.
Thank you, appreciate that. So as I had informed the body earlier, I'll remind you, because I have seen several people come in, the process we'll follow is, per our town bylaw, we have, we have a motion's been made, it's been seconded. It seems to have been made in good faith, so I'll order, I will rule it in order. As such, it will be the first order of business by town bylaw at our next session, which means we will be meeting again here on Monday evening at 7:00 PM. That will be the first order of business. As I may remind everyone, Article 19 was clustered with Article 12, which we declared before either article was heard, which means this will also reconsider Article 12 as a formality. It may or may not have a substantive impact on it. And also, as a result of Articles 19 and Articles 12 having financial implications, be it sources from free cash per our town bylaw, we are unable to take up the budget this evening. So the budget will be the second order of business on Monday evening after we dispense with the motion to reconsider. Is that clear to everyone? I, you know, Mr. Scollins is coming up, but is there any other questions on that? I'll go to Mr. Scollins first. Mr. Merrigan.
David Merrigan, 2356 Washington Street. Do we have to vote on that motion, point of order?
As a matter of fact, thank you for asking that. I appreciate it, and I did make sure I did some homework today. Reread the town bylaw, and the bylaw, and I went over it with town council prior to session beginning this evening, and the bylaw, in my read and in town council's read, says that we will vote the motion first. If the motion passes on Monday, we then will take up the underlying Article 19 thereafter. So thank you for the clarification. I do think that we may want to do some updates to some of these bylaws as well, but that is where we are with our rules, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to the only remaining other article we have on the warrant, which is Article 18. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
This motion would transfer $20,000 from free cash, also known as the undesignated fund balance, to supplement the funds approved at last year's annual town meeting to enable the Bylaw Modernization Study Committee to secure a consultant to codify our town bylaws in an accessible and transparent fashion. Having bylaws that are easy to reference and update will allow all stakeholders, including residents...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Folks, as you're leaving, if I could just remind you, there is still, we're still in session right now, things could happen before we adjourn for the evening, and I also want to remind everyone that on Monday, we also have, we're still in session technically, so while those two articles be taken up, there is still the possibility of other motions being made. So I just want to remind everyone of that before you leave, and we'd like to dispense with the last article here this evening. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. All right, having bylaws that are easy to reference and update will allow all stakeholders, including residents, to more effectively participate in town government and understand the bylaws that govern our town, while improving the quality of the bylaws overall. So again, Finance Committee moves and supports this motion to transfer $20,000 from free cash for this purpose.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 18? Are those that are rising, rising to speak? They're not. Hearing none, any, I'll call a vote. All those in favor of approving Article 18 as moved, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the motion passes unanimously. So I will accept a motion to adjourn on, excuse me, one moment, please. I want to make sure we do this correctly before we move into Monday, because I don't want to do anything myself that'll trigger us potentially having to come back thereafter as well. Okay, that's all cleared up, thank you. So I will, just to remind everybody also, the motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds majority vote, just as a point of clarification. When we vote on it, on Monday. Yes, thank you. So I will now accept a motion to adjourn until Monday at 7:00 PM. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Great, thank you. I hope everybody has a great weekend, and we'll see you here on Monday. Please come prepared.